The most you can get is a fan, and that's considered cooling, but there's no legal requirements. And so the discussions by and suggestions by county staff, as I mentioned, you know, we had representatives from all the departments on monthly meetings. We took a little bit of a hiatus and then we came back to it. We wish we would have done it before the July heat event, but one thing to consider is that the County of Lake does not own or operate a standalone center. So I continue to seek more funding for one or more community resilience centers, which last year in June, we went and toured one in Toowalemie, which we'll talk about thanks to Pastor Shannon and the Red Cross, that can act as a shelter during emergencies and a center during extreme weather, but on blue sky days can offer office space, warehouse storage for disaster response and more. We applied for a CRC planning grant, which we barely missed, just by a point. And so we were preparing to apply for that funding again, and that funding, because of the state of California budget, was dropped for the year. But I do have a request out to fund a planning grant effort based on that to the Catalyst Fund, which is part of the Redwood Region Rise California Jobs First Initiative. And so back to this list, any warming center or cooling center open to the public could include. And the top two suggestions were primarily from the community-based organizations that I was meeting with, such as the senior centers and the community centers that aren't county-owned. They have a real concern about having a sworn law enforcement officer on site when they're open to the public outside of their normal activities. You know, at the senior center, they expect they're going to have seniors come in. But when it's announced and they have a sign out front and saying they're a cooling or a warming center welcoming the general public, there were many concerns about that and they wanted some backup. But our county staff don't necessarily think, you know, that we would need that in county facilities. But the other items, water, snacks, charging stations, HEPA filtration, air conditioning, heating and cooling, and all of those are things that every center would need. And so we developed, because the direction from your board was you wanted something to pull off the shelf and say, when we hit this, then this, and then we open. And so we, we being Wendy Hoffman and Carolyn Purdy in administration, we reached out to many municipalities in California, state, or excuse me, county and city governments, and then coordinated and got information from the National Weather Service and created this chart. This first one is a cooling center, and the necessary conditions are initiated at the discretion of local government when one or more of the following exist. A National Weather Service, or NWS, heat risk forecast at level three or greater for at least three consecutive days. And so I put a picture of that chart, which has the heat-related categories. So level three is red, which is considered a major level of heat. And NWS would issue an excessive heat watcher warning, and/or the forecast high daytime temperatures are accompanied with overnight low temperature of 75 degrees or higher, which is quite unusual, as you know, in Lake County. Excuse me. And/or CISO, or the California Independent System Operator, issues an energy emergency alert, or there's a plan PSPS. And then for the warming center, those are the necessary conditions. Again, it's a step, either one of that, that, and then you move to the next one, and foster And so most of the staff, we didn't have, the main issue again is calling them a center. And so I looked up the California Department of Public Health. What is their definition? And so if you can read that, that's how they define a cooling or warming center. Air-conditioned, accessible to all members of the public, ADA compliant, have a restroom and water, have seating available, widely advertised throughout the community and close to public transportation routes. And so the check marks here on the left side are, I did kind of like a stop, stoplight. So red means no, excuse me, yellow means somewhat, and green means we're good to go. So provide signage at the facility. So in county-owned facilities, right now, we do not have any signs that you would put outside that say cooling or warming center open now or with the hours. But that's easily, you know, we can easily remedy that. I think we do, I'm not 100% sure. Provide information, instruction, or signage in multiple language, including graphics. Distribute center location and hours widely in the public through various media. I mean, we do do that, but as always in Lake County, we get feedback that people, you know, didn't know, they didn't hear, they didn't read it in the newspaper, they didn't see it online. And the green is, all centers are open and available to all population groups. Immigration documentation is never asked for. And then yellow is identify local research and subject matter experts to train center staff. So most of our county staff go through training, and I can't really speak for, but later on I will ask someone to come up who can give you more information about what they have provided to community organizations. Again, the checklist. Train center staff to recognize signs and symptom of heat-related illness and hypothermia. Okay, so the barriers to the County of Lake and trends and options. Just for your awareness, this data comes from the Climate Explorer, is managed by NOAA, the National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration's Climate Program Office, and hosted by the National Environmental Modeling and Analysis Center. It shows observations from 1950 to 2010, then creates lower and higher greenhouse gas emission scenarios. As you can see, both higher and lower emissions scenarios are trending upward for daily maximum temperature projections for Lake County. Here's the average daily maximum temperature projection. The black line again is observed, and that's the one on the bottom, lower greenhouse gas emissions are the blue, and then red is higher. And so in all three of observed and the emissions, you can see that the average daily maximum temperature is expected to increase in Lake County. So the high emissions is 91.1 for July, and the low is 90.6, so that's not a lot of difference. Daily minimum temperatures below 32 in Lake County. And so again, the black line observed is 50.5 as an average, lower ranges from 46 to 58, and higher greenhouse gas emissions ranges from 45 to 58. And so in all the observed and the other scenarios, the daily minimum temperatures below 32 are decreasing. However, as we know, with climate chaos, climate weirdness, climate change, it doesn't mean that it will never be below 32. It doesn't mean we won't have snow events like we had a couple of years ago. And then this slide is from the Cool Climate Network. It's a partnership of universities, government, businesses, and NGOs at the University of California, Berkeley, and they come from the carbon footprint planning tools and scenarios. And they show greenhouse gas reduction potential in Lake County from local policies as compared to the state of California. They found that roughly 35% of all carbon footprint abatement potential statewide is from activities at least partially in control of local governments. And the biggest greenhouse gas reduction in Lake County could be made from switching to electric heating from propane and wood stove and pellets. The second is energy efficiency measures in homes. And the third, followed closely by vehicle miles, travel reduction, is, you know, like public transportation, bicycle riding, living closer to work, switching to electric vehicles, and commercial efficiency. And I had to look up, there's this one that's item category that's called shift consumption. And shift consumption represents projections showing that as disposable income or accumulated wealth increases, so does consumption of energy goods, travel, and more. So.
We have a question for you.
I have a question on this slide.
Sure.
So I know this is reduction potential in 2030, but we're on a trajectory right now where we have so many people using generators, and so it's, are we trying to segue people off these generators during these times of outages? I mean, I woke up to an outage this morning, so whole neighborhood lit up, all the generators. Is this contemplated here, or is this something on top and above?
Probably not contemplated. But that is, that's a good point, because most people's home generators are going to be fossil fuels, gas, propane, or diesel. Not a lot of people have the battery backup, power walls, things, not enough, but people are starting to get them. But yeah, that's not in the calculation. And so current county operated center options and hours of operation include the peer, it's funny how that gets cut off, the peer support centers operated by behavioral health, which are on the left-hand side, are open Monday through Friday, 8:30 to 4:30 PM. These are leased facilities that are not owned by the county, which limits the ability to upgrade the building, you know, putting solar on the rooftop, or battery backup, or upgrading the HVAC, et cetera, because the county, you know, we don't own those buildings. On the right side are the libraries. Both Lake County Library here in Lakeport and Redbud Library in Clear Lake are open until 7:00 PM Wednesdays, and that's the one day that any of our facilities are open past 5:00 PM. Middletown and Upper Lake both close at 5:00 PM on that day. None of the libraries are open on Sunday and Monday, and if there is an observed holiday on a Monday, the libraries are also closed on Saturday. So other possible county-owned, excuse me, county-operated or owned facilities, this is a list of all of those, but no county staffing are at any of these facilities. Some of them lack adequate air conditioning and heating. Most have no electrical backup, such as generators or power walls. And some of them, a separate organization leases or operates the facility, so that would make it a little bit more of a challenge. And most, if not all, do not have HEPA filtration. And so in the July 1st through the 13th heat wave that we all fondly remember from last month, they were open, we opened, the county opened, and the community opened many cooling, or yeah, cooling centers. So in addition to county libraries and peer support center, NGOs opened cooling center for the first time in Lake County history, July 1st through 6th. But like the county, did not offer cooling center operations the 7th through the 13th, because they didn't meet those criteria. They cooled down more overnight, didn't get quite as warm. And so Lakeport Senior Center, Galilee Lutheran Church, Lucerne Alpine Senior Center, United Christian Parish, Cobb Mountain Lions Club, Highland Senior Center, and Kelseyville Presbyterian Church, all opened on different days and in various hours, including the weekends, including allowing you to bring your pets. And the number in parentheses are the number of people who used those centers during that time, when they were open from July 1st through, six. Thank you, Shannon. Let's see, Highland Senior Service Center was operating at the Masonic Lodge. I believe they have some construction going on, but due to a broken cooling system, it did not operate. Redbud Library in Clear Lake did receive a number of requests and questions about being open longer hours on additional days, but they, you know, weren't able to do that.
And real quick, if we can go back, I know that we both received an email yesterday. It has been fixed in today's presentation, but the Kelseyville Presbyterian Church was missing from the originally posted presentation, but that's been rectified.
Yes.
But thank you for doing that.
Thank you, and it's been corrected online as well. And so, you know, the barriers to county departments and the funding needs and requests in order to operate more frequently and longer hours, the number one issue is overtime pay for current onsite staff, funding for additional staff, additional fund for facilities, IT and public services, including janitorial and administration fees of 10%, which supports management, HR, and payroll if you're to open up county facilities. If at least one medical professional staff and one law enforcement officer is at each site when acting as a center is needed, that would need to be budgeted for. Additional space accommodation seating for 80 persons at each site with parking, expanded ADA access, adequate restrooms with diaper changing stations and all, upgraded HVAC, generator, HEPA, drinking water fountains, public Wi-Fi, and electrical upgrades to accommodate charging stations on many or most of the facilities. Private staff break areas with sink, chairs, couch, refrigerator, coffee machine, lactation rooms are needed. Safety supplies, so extra fire extinguisher, first aid kit, smoke alarms, updated building signage. Additional facility supplies would have to be purchased to accommodate more members of the public. And entertainment, things to do. That's one of the number one reasons people don't use them, is there's nothing to do necessarily. That's why most libraries are pretty successful at operating as a cooling and warming center, because there is quite a bit for families with kids to do. And then shelf-stable snacks. And so next steps, continue as is with finalized version of when we announce it, so that the public knows. Increase budgets for libraries and peer support centers for additional staffing. Continue seeking funding opportunities for CRCs or other. And I, in the, oops, in the presentation, I didn't specifically mention that Pastor Shannon Kimballath from Red Cross is here. She has done an amazing amount of work since last year of building the capacity of the non-county-owned facilities, so she's also available to go over anything and answer any questions. But the general consensus right now from staff is unless there is adequate funding, the most that they can do is what we're already doing, besides adding a sign out front that says, "We're open."
So I'm going to ask that we keep this for generating the discussion, but I do want to give some time to Pastor Shannon to come up. I know you have been working hard on this for any comments you may have. And I'll afford you more than three minutes.
Okay, thank you. I wondered, how long am I going to get, three? One of the things that I specifically wanted to make certain that we're including in the conversation around the resilience centers is why the Red Cross has a community adaptation program team in Lake County. And that is because as we are seeing increasing levels of climate crisis, we're seeing increasing levels of billion-dollar disasters all across the United States, all around the world. In the United States in 1980, for example, we had four billion-dollar disasters. Last year, we had 28, the year before that, 24. We've seen a constant trajectory up. And what the data is showing us about this constant trajectory up is that communities cannot keep up with that, right? There's not enough funding. The county on its own is never going to be able to handle all of the disasters that are coming down the pike for our county. FEMA is not going to be able to handle all of the disasters that they're having to do. So the specific task of the community adaptation program, our team, is to look at community-based organizations and how we can increase their capacity to respond to their hyper-local communities in times of need. So the resilience centers is one of the strategies that we are working with in terms of that. That's why we're so committed to the resilience center process, because we don't believe the county is going to be able to fund all of the things that would be required for a county-run facility. However, that said, we do believe that there can be greater partnerships between those community-based organizations and those hyper-local centers that are operating as resilience centers. So one distinction in terms of language that I think might be helpful is that the Red Cross has donated my time to be working with Teri on the Strategic Growth Council application so that we could get a hub. And the hub model is that the county would, if it's going to, if it has limited resources, then our recommendation is that you spend those limited resources on a resilience hub that can be used to help resource these smaller centers that are all around the lake. When we sponsored the trip to visit the Toowalemie Resilience Center, one of the things that they pointed out was the state said, "Build one, build one for your county." And they said, "That's not realistic for our county, we need at least two." And then, as they had disasters, they realized those two really aren't enough either, because you need something in each local community. So the idea is, we want to support the county, not in trying to figure out how to make every single county-owned project rise to this level and standard of a resilience center for warming or cooling, but that we really look at how we develop the hub model so that we can resource all of those centers. Some of the ways that we have been working with the centers themselves, any of them that didn't have resilient power, we have been working with them to have a plan. Three of the centers now have solar, in addition to the solar panels, so they're not just providing power into the grid, but also battery backup system so that they can, all of them, operate a minimum of 72 hours without power, that they will have that resilient power. Some of the facilities, Jessica, I loved your question about are we looking at what the generators are doing? Some of the facilities are better served by generators, and I suspect that that is going to continue to be the case, but we are looking at those types of things. Any of the centers that didn't have, it's not just saying water or bottled water. If not increasing our use of plastics, shift consumption, if we don't want to do that, then what needs to be at the centers is that when the public is there, they need to have access to water, not having to go into the kitchens that might be preparing meals in an extreme event. So we have offered each of those centers, we wrote grants for them to have hydration stations in their, in their public areas. We offered to each of the community centers that wanted to be part of the hub project, subject matter expertise, training for AED, CPR, first aid training, resilient communications, looking at their computer systems, is it better for them to have satellite, or is it better to have internet, what are all of those things? And these centers have done an incredible amount of work, so that when this heat wave hit in July, and we said, "We are going to meet the threshold for when we think resilience centers should open," every one of them that has been working on this project opened. Even Clear Lake, which wasn't in its own facility until their air conditioning failed, but every one of them opened, and every one of them was staffed by volunteers. So one of the additional things I want to say in terms of the increased staffing, there's always going to be a need for some community staff to be present, but there can also be allowances for staff to volunteer, as many agencies have. When I used to work at Venice Health, for example, we had eight hours that we could volunteer anywhere as just part of our time allotment. And so I'd encourage us to look at the potential for encouraging county employees to volunteer at those community resilience centers as well. And then I wanted to say a word about the Charm Project. Teri mentioned that we both are part of the Charm Work Group, which is Climate Health Adaptation and Resilience Mobilization, Lake County Project. And they're funded through Tracking California. They have been funded for the last two years. They're in the current grant cycle to continue their work for the next five years. Charm led an extreme heat tabletop last year that many of us from the county realized wasn't what we needed in a tabletop, because they assumed that the county, meeting these thresholds, was going to open its own resilience centers, which is not how it would work in Lake County. However, they are committed to supporting the process of how we solve the question of communicating the work of the resilience centers to the public. So some of the things that we were able to provide, like the open today signs and flyers that went out, and the Meals on Wheels, and to the clients that are being served, and posted through grocery bags, stuffing the grocery, but all of those things are things that Charm can support as we're developing the resilience hub, and that they have funding for. So, and the purpose in highlighting that is to say that this isn't a judicatory County of Lake problem. It is a community of Lake solution that is available to us. And so we need to include those community-based organizations in all of the conversations around resilience, because you, Board of Supervisor, are amazing, but you can't do this alone. So that's, that's the kind of the key things that I wanted to add to the presentation, and then I'm available for questions as well.
Thank you very much. I do want to go in the back of the room as well. I know that Director Parsons was involved in the conversation. Do you want to come up and add anything, or everything's been said? Okay, everything's been said. Supervisor Pyska.
Yeah, well, I, so much has happened, so many of the things that we're all working towards, that big word of resiliency, which is obviously a place that we're never going to get to, because it's just, the goalposts are going to keep moving as the climate chaos continues. But I just think about incrementally where we've been, like, two years ago, and then last summer when we were touring in Toowalemie, and just this presentation has our NGO and government partnership here today. So it is all about constantly leveraging and layering all of our resources. So I'm just so proud of everything that we're able to do right now, and this is, you know, Teri's position is funded from the state, this climate resiliency officer. So a lot has been coming together, because we've been reacting to so many situations over the years. But to finally have these metrics of when we open a center, that's something that we were struggling with last year, that's a really big deal. So it's always going to be community-based here, because of our isolation, where we are in the region, our access to supplies, and this big lake that we have in the middle. We always go back to, those are our whys. So I'm really happy that we did this presentation, that we've come this far, that we're going to keep working together, that we're engaging with all of the partners, and knowing that everyone's doors just opened up in July, even though maybe no one showed up, that's okay. The first step was the doors were open. So this is just the beginning still of this conversation that's going to go on and on, but thank you both for being here, and thank you for doing so much work. And everybody, all those other partners that are out there on every grant call where we're trying to pull all the senior centers together, and everyone else that's involved, there's a, there's a great deal of other partners that aren't in the room today that have been pushing this work forward.
Thank you for your comment. Supervisor Green?
Thank you. First off, teacher's pet comment, I love it when the slide deck is posted with the agenda items, so everyone can follow along and blow up the small print if they can't see it adequately. Slide 14, I assume this is going to be a living presentation, so I just want to point it out, the days with minimum temperatures, I think the more useful metric in the vertical axis would be average daily minimum temperature, showing us just how below freezing it is. So just an editorial comment on that. And to Pastor Shannon's pitching for the hub, I think that's the biggest takeaway for me here, is it's, it's nice to see what we do have available. It's a little frustrating that we do pop them open, we don't get as much buy-in. So the difficulty of these warming and cooling things that don't- So the, the difficulty of these warming and cooling things that don't rise to the level of a declared emergency, such that we would pop up a big shelter, kind of talks me like I'm very glad to see our peer support centers in there, and thank you to BH for having that willingness to open them up. But some of these facilities, Circle of Native Minds, the Harbor, which is more youth-oriented, the space configuration, the staffing of those particular things, don't scream to me as being really ideal places necessarily, whereas the libraries, as you mentioned, may have a more natural fit, and better communications and Wi-Fi and stuff that would support that. I'm, I'm thinking of the NGOs, and I'm very thankful for those that stood up, but as a ersatz leader of a small NGO myself, I'd be thinking liability, I'd be thinking facility needs, I'd be thinking this is well outside my insurance, you know, so even if I was willing and had a full board, was willing to go all in on this stuff, I think both the building configuration and not knowing if there's going to be bang for the buck for all the extra effort by this particular NGO, I don't know that I could get there. So it's a work in progress, I realize. One thing that kind of makes this problematic is, on a PS/PS event, for example, we're going to get the warning notices, like half of Lake County is going to go dark, but PG&E is getting much better, getting more granular, and actually doing the outages. So we can be planning for days and days for what would be a major PS/PS event, when they actually pull the plugs on selected households or regions. It's not going to justify standing up a warming or a cooling center necessarily. So I just appreciate the presentation mainly because it highlights for me the complexity of what you're trying to do. I do think the libraries and places that have bigger footprints generally, including the senior centers, probably have more value, and I'm just fascinated to hear more about the hub concept, because I think that's really, not the low-hanging fruit, because that's going to be a big ask, but that's really what we need to kind of, what you say, resource these other options as they come on. So thank you for the presentation. I'm still baffled and bemused by a lot of it, but I appreciate everyone's hard work.
I'll just respond to a couple of those things. So we have bajillion calls. I can't make the total of them, but it is all the people having all these conversations that you're bringing up, like, "We're a senior center. We can only have seniors in," or "We don't have a ramp, so we can't have ADA." So these are the conversations that have been having, that have been had and continue to have, because each of these little spokes has to serve the community directly around them, so they all look different. There's, there's not one that looks the same as another, and so that, you know, I mean, these, I understand you're befuddled, but you also don't understand all the work that these people have put into thinking through every step of the way with the volunteers at that center, and what their needs are, and, you know, some can use solar, some can't because they're in the trees. Some are going to need Starlink, because they don't have access to any other Wi-Fi. So there's a lot going on in there, and the hub is, we're just going to keep applying for those grants. And I will say that in the climate bond, that's going to be on the ballot this, this November from the state, there is going to be funding earmarked for resilient centers and fairgrounds, which is one of the things that we have all of our arrows pointing at. We have this big place in our county that has a lot of opportunity, but a lot of needs, and we can't quite figure out which grant will cover it, because, because they're excluded. Fairgrounds are excluded from a lot of these opportunities. So it's, it's always having conversations and moving around and trying to figure out in this grant and that grant, and layering and leveraging. So I get that you bring all these up, because it's the first time you've heard this conversation, but I assure you, assure you, that this has all been worked on for a long, long time.
Vice Chair?
I see those are already the directions that we're looking at currently, like, we're looking for others too, right? Yeah. Well, I'll say too that we did, I know at the Lucerne Alpine Senior Center, they were helped with, with Red Cross for the ADA compliant, and that was really helpful, because that group in Lucerne usually is always ready to deal with an event at any given time, and I know that's probably brought up before, but they're doing everything they can to be one of the centers. And I know Clear Lake Oaks is getting rent back up, and Upper Lake is starting to, you know, get back up too, but I don't know if they're even one of the considerations. But no, I just, I appreciate knowing that this work has been going on and have witnessed it myself. The Lucerne Alpine Senior Center seems very excited about some of those things that have happened. Thinking that, because this will be brought to us for like increasing the budget, right? That's one of the recommendations or directions that we're thinking of. And if we are going to decide that, just like a maybe estimate, like of what we're looking at possibly, you know, just rough estimates would help for us to make that determination. And you're already exploring funding sources. And lastly, once, once we get this moving for the aftermath, if we can, I really appreciate the data that you put together for showing how the event centers were already in place during the events, and the number of events, and the heat and the days and whatnot like that, the cool events too, when it was freezing and all that. If we can establish metrics for like framework when the events happen afterwards, so we can determine how, how well this has worked. That's all. That's, that's what I have, but I, I really appreciate this, and I think it's something that we've needed. Every time there is an event, that's the first thing that's asked. Where do we go? You know, luckily, we have the libraries right now, but of course, if we can, libraries and a couple other folks that are willing to open, but with, with all of the work you put into this, I think we, we can direct them in the, in the right place, and also with the media campaign, or the announcements, or whatever. I know that you're, you're on that right now, just, I've already heard that. So a lot of the questions that I had were already addressed.
Thank you. I will mention that Christopher Veatch, the county librarian, said that extending hours to provide, to provide cooling/warming would require an additional funding with an estimate of $82 per hour per facility, and it's based on hourly utility costs and overtime pay for two library staff members. Actual costs would be determined per facility. And Director Dilman Parsons had given me a budget. I thought I printed it out, but I did not, but what she did mention was that in the February storm event where we opened up overnight shelters, that they spent $14,000 of their department funds that had gone unreimbursed to run those warming centers last year. They had very few overnight guests. The Clear Lake Lower Lake Center had less than 10, which dwindled each day, and the Middletown Center had one person the first night and was empty after that. So I think, it is true right now, they're very low-used, utilized everywhere throughout the state, but as this climate changes, more and more people are going to be looking to that. So I'm, I'm really thankful of our community partner with Red Cross and NCO, who had already begun the work as I was beginning the work.
And I think you're right on that, and I think it's because also, a lot of people were scrambling to know where to go, and I think once this media campaign, or whatever you want to call it, of just notifying the public, you'll get more that will know, and we'll just go straight there, and you'll have a lot more activity.
Supervisor Green?
Just a quick follow-up. I know the cities are trusted partners in all this. I just don't see the cities in here. So before we talk funding, about three county-owned facilities in the city of Lakeport, or trying to prop up two NGOs in the city of Lakeport, I do think a proper understanding and synergy of what the city is bringing to the table for this, this is not just a county problem, and to the extent the county is addressing it within the city of Lakeport, it's all city stuff. So I'd love to hear more about that down the road at some appropriate time.
Supervisor Pyska? Oh, sorry.
Can we just let Pastor Shannon tell you something that I just learned this morning about the city? Was it you? City of, or no, it was Director Arton, about the city of Lakeport and the Silvera Center, where they're working out, yeah, a MOU to, for the city to be able to stand up that, and for public health to be able to provide some resources.
Supervisor Pyska?
Yes, I just want to go back to your comments about increasing the campaign to let people know, and so as we have consistency throughout these events, I think people will understand that these resources are available, and I think there will be increased use as they continue. But the other thing is, we're kind of operating in this place right now where it's not a declared emergency, and we're going to be inching closer to that every year. So, and that's when the reimbursements will likely kick in at some point, but as things get, this is, I think this is a good time to be doing this, because we're not getting lots and lots of people that need these things. We can kind of experiment on a small level and kind of build it up, and it's not going to be long until we get to the place where it is extreme, and it, a lot of people are going to need these services, and they hopefully will be reimbursed through declarations.
Pastor Shannon?
I, I wanted to add a comment in terms of the cities and the work that Lakeport has been doing around the Silvera Center, but also to acknowledge that the tribes have been doing an amazing work. So...
Last one, always.
You know, Middletown, Twin Pine didn't need to be part of this resilience project, because they've been doing it since 2015. So I want to acknowledge that it's not just the community-based organizations, it's not just the cities, it's not just the county, but the tribes are also very active in this work. And the place where all of these groups are invited to be in this conversation together is the Resilience Hub Work Group of the COAD, which is community organizations based, or excuse me, active in disaster. And that meeting is led, or that agency, that group collaborative, is led by tripartite board, which is one-third government, tribal, city, county. One-third of the leaders are community-based organizations, and one-third of the leaders are those leading the actual work groups. So the Resilience Hub Work Group is actually, I provide the administrative support, but it's led by the Lake County Community Foundation, and, and that is the place where we are engaged in this conversation every single month, on how to work that, on how to move this work forward. And so the more people that are engaged in that conversation, the more helpful it would be. And then the, the next thing that came to my mind is, I was listening to some of your comments, particularly Jessica's comment that it's not a declared emergency. There is somewhat of a disconnect between the work of OES and the work of the resilience office in terms of these projects. So for example, I would argue that, and I had this conversation with Terry, she needs to be in those resilience hub conversations, but she's not, because the county says the COAD representative is OES. So we need to expand our understanding of who should be in these conversations. So that was one thing I wanted to add. And then one thing that came up in the, the tabletop, which is in the report, which I sent you all, and I hope you will read if you haven't, more than just the two-page executive summary at the top, a question about the reimbursement. Some things shouldn't require a federal declaration for reimbursement, and the specific thing that came up in the tabletop is, one of the centers during the tabletop said, "We want COVID supplies." So they went over to public health, who was present at the tabletop, and said, "Can we have, can we have COVID tests? Can you supply those?" And she said, "Nope, can't do it, because that request has to come from OES." Well, we're working on that resource request process, but even if OES had requested it, if there's not a declaration, that question of who's paying for that resource is not yet solved. So, so there, there are other really granular conversations that are happening around the resources and how those things are going to play out, and the Resource Hub Work Group is where they're happening. So I just wanted to put that in there and invite you to be present for that, and I feel like there was one other note I wanted to make, but I've lost it.
I want to make sure that you do connect with Director Arton in the back of the room, because you might get a different answer than you may have gotten. So, and, and, and right now, you're not at the microphone, so let's not have a discussion, but please make sure to connect, just because things may have changed, and I think we can get to better places.
Yeah, absolutely. And we actually did connect during the waiting time, so...
We're hanging out.
Yeah, it's good.
Supervisor Simon?
I agree with all three of those steps. We continue down there, additional signage, outdoor notifications, however we can, to the spots, you know, as simple as, you know, the fold-out board or whatever, saying, "Hey, this is where it's at." Increased budgets, libraries, peers. I'd like to see some of that coming back. Sounds like we have the information to look at that while we're doing budgets and moving through that. I know we have different, you know, there are disaster funds that are there, that are internal, that we don't need to wait. I, I know, but, you know, it needs to be mentioned, and those types of things, and then continue seeking funding opportunities for community, community resilience centers. You know, obviously partnerships, I'm always talking about partnerships. We have partnerships. We have an agreement for Middletown Rancheria. I know everybody sees the casino was even talked about today. We're a tribe. We're a governing organization. We're federally recognized. Yeah, we have businesses, other those things. We work on a different way. We got to make money to take care of our people. That's how we do it. It's, you know, our gaming is not like the gaming you see anywhere else. Ours is government. It does government essentials, provides for our people, provides opportunities. That's what we do with it. Doesn't go in someone's pocket, it goes to the community. So we have a Red Cross relationship we have since the beginning of the disasters directly. We have a, an expanded resource agreement with PG&E. That's why the center opened up this year, because they asked for that. We agreed with it, we worked through that. We're working on other properties. Always look at the hubs and everything, and I'll always say this for every meeting I go to, there's a lot of federal dollars out there, that if we can build those partnerships between this government and the tribal governments, we can make a lot of headway and probably be a lot more successful on our grant applications. Not miss by one point, win by five points. So those are opportunities, I think we continue to work through the process and continue to do these things, but I think the hub is the right way to go, and looking at those things, and we're always trying to think future planning. So I think we have opportunities, but I agree with all three of those. I do want to mention something too to you, Terry, and everything. EPA has a big community change grant that's coming out right now. It's a very big opportunity, and there's some important deadlines. I mean, from a tribal standpoint, this is one we're not going to miss out on. Hopefully, everybody goes for it. Hopefully, it's not too competitive, but we need to work together on that. That's a huge, long-term, you know, we're talking 20, $20 million grants and other things like that. So opportunities are out there. We need to continue to work and collaborate together on them, and the tribes are always here. Whether you guys open heating centers or not, our facilities that we run, Robinson, the four casinos, they're always open. People know. You heard that from a community member today in public health. They know where to go, they know where there's a clean restroom, they know where there's a place to cool themselves. Now, it always gets a little challenging if it fills up, but we work through it. But that's what we are there for. We have generators, we're backed up, we make sure that we can take care of it, because when your guys' power goes out, we're all running our own energy companies on the reservation. We have elders we need to take care of, we have medically, and no one else is going to come, it's us. So we do those things, 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and we're working on other projects. So just continue collaboration, but completely support this, and when we go for grants, get support letters from all seven tribes. You know, reach out early, not last minute. I think we can turn around things a little quicker than others, but we know in November something's coming. Start asking for those support letters now, when we're talking about collaboration. So just some of the things that I wanted to mention, and, yeah. One more teaching point. The tribes are always mentioned last in every conversation. Even happened here today. You guys all witnessed it. "Oh, yeah, the cities ain't on there." Well, how about the nations that have been here forever? Always, you know, maybe first one time. That's all I'm asking for.
Thank you for your comment. Director Arton, I think I summoned you by saying your name out loud.
Yeah, I just wanted to follow up on a couple of comments. First of all, we were participating with the tribes. I think at the end of June, they did a great, with a collaboration with Charm, great tabletop exercise, and Dr. Duan, myself, and our emergency planners got to go and learn about all the work the tribes are doing around this issue, and so they have been very involved, and we're very appreciative of their partnership and the proactive work they're doing on this. I also want to thank American Red Cross. I've been a part of American Red Cross for a long time, so I'm happy to see that they are very involved in leading on this issue too. And then I just wanted to follow up with the city of Lakeport agreement that we're working on. I believe it has my signature on there. I think we're just waiting for a ratification from the city of Lakeport on that. It's not so much specifically a cooling or heating shelter, it's being modeled more as like a respite site for people to come in, hang out for 30 minutes or so, maybe watch a TV show, get some water, snacks, and then kind of go on. So it could be used for, in a declared emergency for evacuations, if people need to stop and, you know, again, just kind of take a break and collect their things, or their thoughts, or where they're going to go on to next. or where they're going to go on to next. And in terms of the health department, our primary responsibility is not sheltering, it's a secondary responsibility for us. So we would be a support agency. So just for everybody's awareness, if a shelter were to be open long-term, more than a couple of days, our environmental health staff would come over and support that, making sure that the food's being served, is cooked properly and stored properly. So that way you don't have a secondary incident around diseases that are foodborne related. Our nursing staff can come over and help with wound care or first aid, help with isolation or quarantine if people were to show up sick or anything like that. So I just want to let you guys know that we are very involved with this and I always support the work that the county has been doing around this issue because yeah, the heat-related stuff is going to get, continue to get worse and worse as you see with the charts. So I just want to let you guys know that we're involved with it. And do not ever hesitate to ask me, call me, if you ever need resources. Those COVID tests are free to us or have been given free to us. I think we are supporting that with some grant money now, but if anybody ever needs those type of resources, always happy to help that. So don't hesitate to call.
Thank you for your comment. So one of the things that stands out to me in your presentation was, I believe it was 37% of homes do not have AC.
Correct.
And I see that as a problem that can have a solution. So the state has and has had the S-Gip program, the self-generating incentive program, where you can buy battery backup systems to ensure that you have electricity when you have PSPS. Unfortunately, at least what I received from Michael Day and RCRC is that the majority of that went to secondary homes in Marin County, not people who actually needed help to be able to purchase these things. But the S-Gip program still exists. Is there something out there where we can help? I don't know if it's the PACE program. I don't know if it's something like the S-Gip program where we can obtain a few million dollars and help with either low-level loans or even as grants to get, because if we can make individuals resilient, then it's going to be less reliant on the community to be resilient. We're still going to need it. We have, our last pick count, 507, 501 people that are experiencing homelessness. Those people, you can't give them an AC system and say you're good, right? But they're still going to need those resiliency centers. If the power goes out for a community, even if they have an AC system, it's not going to matter. They might still need the resiliency centers. But if we can get all of our households to become as resilient as possible, similar to the home hardening program that's happening, so that we can rely on ourselves to deal with these emergencies and these more extreme events, we would reduce the need that the community continuously has to put out. We're talking about potentially increasing the budget. I'd love to decrease that 37% to as little as possible so that whatever we have to add into the budget is as minimal as possible because we're giving the resources to the individuals to be able to become more resilient on their own. So that's something that I would love to see under the other of what is out there to ensure. And maybe if we have the opportunity and the money saying, okay, now that the opportunity's there, now it's a law in Lake County, that you have to have the ability to cool down your home and warm, we already have the warm, so on and so forth. So I see that as a problem that I have yet to hear an identified solution that I think is something I'd love to focus on because I think that could be really helpful rather than continuously putting out $500,000 a year but not solving the individual's problems in their own homes.
I was just going to say, one of the things that we, oh, and that we looked at initially, looking at a grant funding for solar-operated mini splits.
Yeah, that's actually what I was going to say. The Middletown Tribe along with NCO, Lake County Community Foundation, and then Terry and I supporting the grant writing process, did apply for a grant to provide mini split, solar-powered, battery-backup, air conditioning units for Lake County. I don't, I didn't hear if that, if we've heard if we got that a grant or not, but we did apply for that. So it's not just that we're looking at the community resilience, we are looking at grants for individual resilience and there is funding, but it takes time, right, to do those things. And I just didn't hear if we got that grant, but I, but we did apply for it. And it was a collaborative effort of the Middletown Tribe, Lake County Community Foundation, and NCO with our support. So I mean, those things are happening. They just weren't in this particular report because this was on, you know, the resilience centers. But I'm just saying those things are happening as well.
And I can appreciate that, but things like the PACE program exist today. And those are things that we've struggled to initiate. And when it was initiated, at least in the city of Clear Lake, there was a problem with our, I don't know if it was the tax collector or the auditor controller, like it just, we need to figure out ways to utilize what is already available out there because grants, they're competitive, it's not always going to happen. And I love the idea of connecting it all to solar and everything else, but the bare minimum, if we can figure out how to just get those AC systems in there, maybe we're asking for the whole entire thing to happen when we really just need to look at a more, a smaller case to be able to make those changes in the homes. It does create other problems. People have to be able to afford the electricity and so on and so forth, but at least it's a step forward. If we're not taking any steps, then it's not, it's not necessarily helpful. I appreciate all the efforts being made to try to make that happen. I'm just bringing it up because it hasn't been discussed until just now and I want to make sure that we're looking at all the opportunities. I know Vice Chair Crandall has brought us in the past, the PACE program that's been discussed quite often as well at RCRC. Might not be the best program out there, but it's an opportunity to get people to the right place so that, I mean, if you, I'm going to say something that I'm sure I'll get some blowback on. If you are renting a home in Lake County and you do not have AC, that's substandard in my opinion.
And that's...
And we have to make that change.
We do. And just for my clarification, PACE, you're talking about the property assessed clean energy?
I don't know what it stands for.
Which is where you can...
It's a loan program that gets attached to your property tax that you pay over time.
It's funny, you know, I worked on that here in the county in my previous iteration in administration and it was adopted and I believe it was rescinded and only allowed for commercial properties. But I don't know the answer to that. I can find out.
Well, the one I brought had a group that was trying to present it to us and it was a good thing we didn't go that way with the specific group, so I'll just stay at that.
We are having technical difficulties again, so.
Again. Well, I think we needed a break.
Okay.
Do we need 10 minutes?
Yeah.
All right. We will reconvene at 12:01, whoever can still hear me.
Are we ready, Sam?
Hey, yes, I'm ready. But I cannot hear what is going on in the room.
Looks like it was Mr. Sandoval. Sam? Are we good?
Yes, yes, I'm here. Do you want me to start?
Sorry. I know your name is Sam. I was talking to Sam Houston. If you could please stay muted, Mr. Sandoval. I think you're here for a different item. I'm not certain. But right now, we are continuing on our agenda item 6.4, related to cooling, warming, and clean air center procedures. We were unfortunately interrupted by another technical difficulty. We are back. I'm going to say, I believe that the board has concluded its discussion. I want to open it up for the public because I have not done so and want to make sure to hear from the public before we give our final direction. So, anyone wish to speak on this item? Mr. Houston? We don't have any...
Recording stopped.
So, I'm going to make a request that we take lunch so that we can give our IT staff and our video tech the time needed to be able to come back to what we need to be able to continue our meeting. And so, we will reconvene. I apologize for maybe the short lunch, but I want to reconvene at 1:00 PM. We'll see you then. So much for Reno.
I've got a question for you, Lloyd. Do you need to have video or do you just need to have audio? Yeah, but we need to hear the public. And six.
Matthew, are you there?
Yes, and I can hear you Zoom, Sam.
Oh, good. Can you make this a co-host? Because I think you're host now, right?
My machine is host right now. Would you like me to leave it host and assign you co-host?
Yeah, just assign it co-host. Just leave it and see. Jake just did a BIOS update, but it wasn't much. And the error logs just say it just shut down. It went to sleep is what it...
Okay. Sounds good, Sam. So I think everything's working on the Zoom side. If you can mute.
Wait, I can barely hear you. Go ahead. One more time.
I said, "Everything seems to be connecting in Zoom." I'm not seeing video from your screen yet, but it appears to still be starting up. I'm heading on into the chambers so we can discuss further. And I'll see you in just a sec.
Okay.
And so you can go ahead and mute the audio from the...
Yeah, I'll mute this. Matthew, are you there?